Call to order regular meeting dated Thursday, September 19th, 2019. I would like to remind everybody to silence their phones and any other electronic devices. If you'd like to speak on one of the agenda items tonight, please fill out one of the blue slips in the back of the room and turn it in to Ms. Jessica here in the front. We have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Ms. Trimmie.
Actually Dennis is going to do it for me tonight.
Mr. Scott.
Thank you for the privilege. Father, we thank you tonight for this meeting. We thank you that you brought us here safely. Father, we ask for a special blessing tonight for our friends over in southeast Texas. Father, may you keep your hands across them, may you give them peace in this time of turmoil. We just ask tonight that as we go about your business, may the words of our mouth and the meditation of our heart be acceptable to you, oh Lord. We thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Roll call, Ms. Jessica.
Mr. Abshar?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pont?
Here.
Mr. Bears?
Here.
Mr. Brain?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Farnum?
Here.
Mr. Guidry?
Here.
Mr. Guillory?
Yeah.
Mr. Landry?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Latour?
Here.
He will be seated.
Vice President Mayo?
Here.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mrs. Trimmie?
Here.
And President White?
Here. Thank you, ma'am.
Items four and five are 6:00 PM actions, so we will come back to four and five at 6:00 PM. Item six, appearance by Ms. Marion Butch Fox, candidate for state representative, District 37. Right here to the podium, ma'am. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Marion Butch Fox, and I'm a candidate for state representative.
And your address?
2002 Fox Road, Lake Arthur, Louisiana.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for coming tonight.
You're welcome. So, I just wanted to come, thanks to the invitation, to speak to y'all tonight about my candidacy for state representative. I have thirty-plus years in economic development and tourism, and we, since my tenure started in 2012, we've brought in over $250 million of investment and created 300 new jobs. Now, you have to remember that this is a parish of 31,000 people, so I know Calhoun Cameron are much bigger, but we have a smaller population base. So, I'm very pro-business. I think that Louisiana needs to take a real close look at our tax laws and our insurance laws and tort reform and all kind of things to make our state better and friendlier to business, both large business and small business. Because the insurance rate right now, my farmers have fleets of vehicles, and their insurance has quadrupled in the last four years. And they, small businesses can't sustain that kind of increase in insurance. So, anyway, I'm really pro-business and I'm a conservative Republican, I'm pro-gun, pro-life, all of those things, but I just wanted to come and tell y'all a little bit about me and who I am and what I stand for.
Thank you very much. We do have a few jurors like that. Mr. Brain?
Thank you, Mr. President. Marion, I remember when I first met you, it was in Jennings, in January in 2011. I became, I was president that year, and Brian, you know, we had, we went over there and signed the National Trade Agreement.
Right.
Am I right on that, Brian?
Yes.
And, yeah, so I got to, and because my first kind of thing as being president, and I remember Brian drove and he missed the exit, but, uh...
(laughter)
I thought I'd share that. But anyway, that was a, that was a pretty big deal, you know? I just remember that. You were, you were over there in charge of all that, actually, but, uh...
Yes.
So, I just, I just wanted to bring that up. I remember that, I enjoyed it, and I guess it's still going on. We still have that agreement in place.
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Thank you.
One other thing I'd like to tell you is we're working on a super region from the Sabine River all the way to St. Mary Parish, because we're losing out in the legislature because of the political block in New Orleans and Baton Rouge. So, we're putting together this coalition. It doesn't involve money, it doesn't involve anything, you don't have to sign anything on the dotted line, but it's about political clout as this region. So, we're, we're looking to introduce that in January. So, thank y'all so much.
We have a few more. Ms. Trimmie?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to let y'all know that Butch and I have been friends since the early 90s.
Yes.
We've been to New York, we've been to Washington DC, we've been all across the nation together. We've worked hard, and we've played hard, and we've had fun.
Yes.
And I love you.
Well, I thank you. I love you too.
And you have made a difference in my life, and I just hope you the best, and God bless you in your endeavor to have the courage to do what you're doing, because that is hard to put your, your name and, and your life on the line, and all of us have done it, but not to the extent that you're doing it. So, I wish y'all the, I don't want to wish you luck, I want you to win.
Thank you.
So, I want you to win.
Well, thank you.
I know that you will do great for the, for our area.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Butch. Good to see you too.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you. Not a lot of ladies named Butch, but you earned it. You're out there and, uh, I can tell you that you've been a great friend for a long time, and, and we've worked on the chamber together, we've worked on economic development together, and thank you for what you do. I want to compliment, of course, Shailin and Troy and you on all, running a very clean race.
Yes.
You're running on y'all's merits, and that's really good to see that in this day and time, and thank you for putting your name out there for public service. Thank you, and good luck.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Scott?
I'd echo what Mr. McMillan said about, you know, I appreciate when people run races the right way, so thanks to all of you guys, but, you know, it's one thing to, to actually do the job and be a public servant, it's another thing to have to build a collaborative effort between different aspects of these different service sectors, so, you know, sitting with you at MCOW and some of the things we've had to go through for years, you know, you've got to respect your neighbor, and, you know, I can't make a law that forces you to love them...
That's right.
But somehow, we've got to figure out how to both leave unhappy and get something done. So, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Item number seven, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane?
Mr. President, we have six applications before you tonight, and recommend they be approved.
Second. Of a motion by Mr. Guillory and a second by Mr. Farnum to approve. Any discussion? Any objection? Seven carries. Eight, consideration of approving payment of all current invoices advised regularly monthly budget to actual comparisons. I have a motion by Ms. Trimmie and a second by Mr. Brain. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Item eight carries. Nine, consideration of approving...
Move on nine.
...a regular meeting of police jury dated August 22nd, 2019. I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Bears. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Item ten, consideration of adopting an ordinance restating and re-rectifying section 26 through 20, or 35 of code and ordinance of parish of Calhoun, Louisiana, specifically zoning district regulations.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Scott. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Ten carries. Eleven, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the following items as submitted by the offices of Homeland Security emergency preparedness.
Move on level, no bullets.
Second. A supplemental of a grant application in amount of $90,816.81 for the State of Homeland Security Program Grant B. Submittel of a grant application in amount of $41,610.13 for the Emergency Management Performance Grant. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Collins. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Eleven carries. Twelve, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the supplemental of the Human Resources Housing Program Annual Public Housing Agency...
Don't move.
...plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. I have a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Bears. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Thirteen, consideration of adopting a resolution accepted to retrofit bay doors projects as substantially complete. I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Collins. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Thirteen passes. Fourteen, consideration of adopting a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late Gloria Landry. I have a motion by Ms...
Second.
Trimmie, uh, Trimmie and a second by Mr. Guidry. We do have some discussion on this item. Mr. McMillan?
Oh, I didn't know Chris's mom, but I know Chris, and, uh, mother's love is unconditional. You know, in my mom's eyes, I never did anything wrong, and I'm sure in her eyes, Chris never did anything wrong, and we both would probably never did. But, uh, she had to be a great lady, because I know she raised a great family and a great son, and our condolences are with Chris.
Thank you. Appreciate it. She had a good life.
Ms. Trimmie?
Yeah, I have known Chris's mother for, I don't know how many years. How many years, Chris?
Probably forty.
Probably forty years. Yeah, last forty years. Butch's dad and his mom and dad were both in the auto parts business and then became Napa people, and so for all of these years, we've been friends, and very close to his parents and close to his family. So, I just want to honor your mother tonight to let everyone know what a wonderful lady she was, and she always wanted to help others. She was that kind of a person. She always put others first, and, uh, so I know it's hard, and it's hard for Chris and for me too, but anyway, bless the Landry family and pray for them, okay? Thank you.
Yeah, I knew Ms. Gloria and Mr. Rookie pretty good. I, I used to go over there and to Chris's office, and they would, when Rookie was there, for sure, we always had some good conversations, and your mother was just a special lady. So, I know you're going to miss her, and like, like Mr. McMillan said, those moms are special. Um, you know, I, I lost my mom as well, but it, uh, just know that, that you had some great parents. You know, I always enjoyed talking to them, and, and, you know, we're going to be praying for you guys, and just wanted to say that.
Guidry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, Chris mom, in every race that I ever ran in, in that district, she said, "I'm supporting Mr. Guidry, because he always is smiling. He's always a happy person." And let me tell you something, sometimes you can look at a person and know just the family tree as to where they were raised, and Chris, you know, you and I go way back, man, and I know what it is to lose, lose your mom, and, um, I just want you to know that it gets better, and, um, she's in a much better place, and you've always been the type of guy that's always stood on the things that you believe in firmly, and I just want you to know that everybody up here loves you, and we're going to keep praying for you, man, because we know the type of family you, you from, and you're good people, Chris, and we love you, man.
Well, Chris, I didn't know your mom, but I know you, and if the theory's correct, apple don't fall far from the tree, and the way you speak your mind, I don't know if I really wanted to know your mom.
I promise she did that.
Well, we were here for you, and we still are.
You didn't have to wonder what she was thinking, that's for sure.
Anybody else? Item fourteen passes. We are not going to adjourn until Mr. Bean.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I thought, I know you're going to have to have a recess until six. I thought I could take this opportunity to ask Mr. Grimeon to go ahead and come up to the podium, and he can update everybody on this bad flooding we're seeing in southeast Texas. It's actually affected us too, in the western part of the parish, and, um, we've got enough time, so I appreciate him coming up.
Thank you, Mr. White. As Brian said, we've been dealing with the remnants of this tropical storm, and like so many others we've had in the, in the past few years, this one has not behaved like they would have hoped it had, but, um, I was just telling, uh, Mr. Andrew Pont earlier, in the last five years, I-10 has been closed several times for, for flood events like this, and that's never happened before. Um, so it's just some unusual weather patterns we're having. The other thing is, on the Louisiana side of the border, we got maybe 10 inches at the most up in Alligator Park. Alan could give you some better numbers than that, but right on the other side, 30, 40 inches of rain, devastating, and so, uh, the tropical systems are getting more unpredictable. We used to be able to watch them come across from Africa and have two weeks to think about it. Now, we may not have two days. So, that's why we urge people to be prepared year-round. Fortunately, the, the western side of the parish got some rain, but the rest of the parish really is surprisingly free of any lasting damage here, so we, we did file an emergency declaration today, just in anticipation. We're, we're not going to trust this thing until it totally dissipates, maybe another day or two, so with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Mr. Brain?
Thank you, Mr. President. Dick, uh, since we don't have such, you know, have as many problems as they do over there, because they got a lot of problems, do you plan on dispatching any of our crews and whatever to help over there?
Yeah, we've been in touch with them today, Mr. Brain, but they, uh, have assured us that they have it under control, so they've not requested any, uh, any assistance, and as you know, during Hurricane Harvey, it was, uh, because of what happened, and they weren't able to get from the Texas side, we provided a lot of help, but, uh, they have not needed it.
All right.
But yes, sir, that is part of our reasoning for, for doing a, uh, emergency declaration.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Connor, has there been any talk of raising that interstate and those spots where that water is coming over? I mean, I know it's not really under our jurisdiction, but I mean, either the state of Louisiana or the state of Texas, you would think, as many times as it's been closed, that I'm hoping someone somewhere is thinking about that.
Landry, uh, you know, we've had conversations with DOT, DOD quite frequently, and it has come up in conversations, but I don't know to what extent that that's being looked at, you know, seriously. I would, I know they've studied some of that, and, uh, they certainly do see the need, so hopefully that will be in the works. I wish I could tell you, you know, more, and maybe there is more, I just, I'm not aware of it at this point.
Yeah, could I add, um, yeah, that caused a major disruption. I-10 westbound's been closed since early this morning, but at about the same time, DOTD closed Highway 12 and also Highway 190. So, for trucks and other traffic trying to get to Texas, they had to go at least to Highway 8 and possibly even up to I-20, so you're talking about a six to eight hour detour for that little spot of water coming over the road there.
Mr. Farnum?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know, uh, Texas has taken the initiative to raise their interstate at the, at the border, and it looks like they're going to raise it probably somewhere in the vicinity of three to four feet. Uh, it's already in progress right now. You can see it as you drive through there, where they're elevating the, the new part of the interstate they're building. We've got to, we've got to take that initiative back on our side of the border to meet that, or that's not going to do any good. They raise theirs, we don't raise ours, so that's something we need to push forward on really hard. I was up in Dequincy today, and, and I saw a streamless end of 18-wheelers flowing across the border, uh, coming down Highway 12 today, and it must have been horrible down there. So, there was hundreds of 18-wheelers rolling through Dequincy today. So, uh, it's something we got to fight for on our side of the border. Thank you.
Mr. Bears?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Wainwright, if I may, the one rain, uh, the one rain information on the one rain, uh, the one rain page, uh, I know y'all are probably looking over that stuff. I mean, does everything seem to be performing? All the laterals, I mean, do they all seem to be performing adequately, um, up and down?
Yes, sir. Uh, we've watched it. We've had our alerts going on all day. We've been, you know, this, some of our areas have, uh, reached 10 inches, you know, in the last 25 hours, which is significant, and we've had some high-water alerts, but we do have some road closures out there, or high-water markings, but, you know, yeah, everything for this type of event is functioning, to my knowledge, like it, like it could or should.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Scott?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Grimeon. You know, the things that this jury, as well as the entire state, if not this country, as we continue to look at watershed management, you know, collaboration between all of our parishes is a must, you know, with the watershed initiative at the state now, and we beginning this formal discussion of how we work together as parishes, this body along with the new body in just a few months, if we don't continue to seek after a more resilient Calhoun parish, the things that are happening to our friends in southeast Texas, and even in 2016, just over to Jeff Davis Parish, we have dodged a bullet like four or five times in just a few years. 30 or 40 inches of rain is going to devastate our area, but we can do things right now, and we've done those things, by some of the things that we've done, whether it was consolidating our drainage districts, whether it was passing new ordinances, a new maintenance, uh, plan to be able to maintain our ditches better, capital improvements, the 17 million year after year to work on drainage, we have to continue those things to be able to plan, prepare, adapt, absorb, and eventually recover from these natural disasters, because they are reoccurring over and over again. I don't call them the CC word, but they are naturally reoccurring weather conditions, more and more rain, longer periods of time. We have to do things different than we've all, than we've been accustomed to for 20 or 40 years. I don't want to look back in the 20 years and somebody say, "I wish you would've." So, you know, we have, we got a boat that we got to paddle, and I hope we take every opportunity to do that. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Dick. We will take, now take a short recess and reconvene at 6:00 PM. So now, 6:00 PM, we'll go back to item four on the agenda, which is hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM and serve as the board of review to hear protest on current tax assessments. Mr. Gab?
Thank you, Mr. President. Each year about this time, the police jury serves and sits as the board of review for tax assessment appeals. You review appeals by property owners challenging the assessed values of their properties. Wendy Aguilar, as the assessor, and by state law, is the advisor to this board on these matters. As board review, you're only looking at the assessed values, it's all that's coming for you today, and with that, Ms. Aguilar will present the appeals.
Name and, uh, name and position with the parish, please.
Wendy Curphy Aguilar, Calhoun Parish Assessor. Do you need my address?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So, good evening, jurors. Thank you again for seeing me. As Mr. Gab relayed to you, we do this once a year. By law, the assessor provides an opportunity for taxpayers, property owners, to look at their properties, look at their valuations, and discuss the values during what we call an open book period or public inspection. It's got a lot of different names. The property owner or their representative at that point can address the issues that they have with any valuation with the assessor. After that timeframe is up, there are certain things by law that they have to do, and then they can, if there is no resolution to their issue, they can then appeal to the board of review, which is you guys. And so, we do this once a year, and as long as they've followed all the proper procedures and provided all the proper documentation, they can proceed to the appeal process, which is the board of review, you, and then forward into the Louisiana Tax Commission and the court system if they choose to. So, tonight, you guys are going to hear a few appeals. We don't have that many, really, and, um, remember, you're going to look at what the assessed value is. I mean, we all understand, nobody likes paying taxes, but remember, what we do in the assessor's office is valuation, so you're looking at the value of the property that's being appealed, and after review of this, you can either uphold the valuation that the assessor's office has, or if you have proper appraisal techniques, you can choose to adjust a valuation, but you have to use proper appraisal techniques to do that. So, I have a few of them that I'm going to start with this morning, uh, this evening. So, we have, the first one we have is Aaron's, Inc. These are personal property parcels, meaning business assets. Aaron's has been filing appeals across the state for several years now. There is multi-law suits statewide for Aaron's. Basically, their position is, and I don't believe there's anyone from Aaron's here, I apologize, I should have asked that first. I don't believe there is. So, they have filed multiple lawsuits across the state. They're claiming that their inventory is not taxable, because it is paid on and in someone's home. However, they have the right to repossess it if that person does not pay on their monthly note, and therefore, um, the association, the Assessors Association, and basically the law states that that is their inventory, and they should be paying taxes on their inventory. So, that's where the dispute is. This is in, I believe, district court now, so I would just respectfully ask that you uphold our valuations as is, so that this can get, continue through the court process.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. McMillan to uphold. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Guillory?
I was in Washington, and they was talking about this, and this is, uh, it, once it goes out to the people and they rent it, they pay the taxes on it, but I think when it comes back, they're trying to collect the tax again?
No, basically what it is, is that is considered their inventory until that person pays off their note, and then once that person pays off their note and they possess it, they own it, it comes off of the, of the, like Aaron's inventory. They no longer are responsible for it. But until it's paid for, until, so you go to Aaron's and, and rent a couch, or lease a couch, or whatever, um, it, it is in someone's home, but until it is paid off and belongs to that person, it is still considered part of Aaron's inventory. So, that's, that's where the, the sticky part of it is, because your couch is not accessible. It's your personal property. It's not accessible for property tax purposes, it's not business, so forth, but Aaron's is saying, because this went into somebody's home, it's no longer taxable, which, that's not the way that the current law is written, and why this is going through court right now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Do we have any further discussion? Mr. Farnum?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, at any given time, that couch could come back to the store and go out to somebody else's house...
Correct.
...the next day, and it could do that 50 times during the life of that couch.
Correct.
Um, okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. President, before we too take final action, we should ask if there is anyone in the audience here for Aaron's.
Is there anyone with Aaron's here in the audience that would like to speak on this item?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Hearing none? That passes. It's uphill.
So, our second appeal is from Interfin Field Services LLC. This is a pipeline company. Once again, we have had, um... Once again, we have had multi-parish lawsuits from Interfin based on the fact that they feel like, they purchased these pipelines, and they feel like that the tables that the assessors use are inaccurate based on their valuation processes. And so, there is currently a lawsuit as well, multi-parish, for Interfin to dispute the tables of the depreciation pipeline tables that we use as assessors. We have, have had this one appealed in, I don't know, three or four other parishes, I believe is how many parishes it is. So basically, again, I would just ask that you uphold our current valuations and allow this to go on through the court process.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. McMillan to uphold, and a second by Mr. Landry. We do have discussion. Mr. Scott.
So when you're looking at the pipeline appraisal, is it different than they do it in Texas? Or, I mean, are your charts different than?
Yes. Louisiana and Texas have different.
Real different? I'm just curious.
I couldn't, I couldn't give you a correct answer on that. I'm not gonna tell you, but I'm not sure about Texas. I just do know that they are different.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
I do have another questions before you, Ms. Aguilar.
Sure.
Any of these other pipeline companies questioning the table y'all use? I mean, 'cause there's 100-plus different companies out there that have pipelines running through Louisiana.
Not, we, we get questions on the tables, not to the drastic difference in valuation that Interfin is requesting.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have a motion and a second to uphold. Do we have any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Bean.
Just in case there's someone from the company.
Is there someone for Interfin here that would like to speak on this item? Hearing none. That, that is upheld.
Thank you. Sorry, there's lots of paper here. Okay, so I believe the next one we have is the Best Western Plus, Sulphur, 108 Western Properties. So this is a hotel in Sulphur on Penn Tail, and currently, I have been working with their tax rep. But unfortunately, their tax rep is out of Houston, and he has been underwater the last two days. So all of our communication has been broken down. He did send me a message later this afternoon. He, he just can't get to any of his stuff right now. So we're gonna continue to work towards a resolution. But at this point, I would just ask you to uphold the values as they are currently.
Second.
And allow us to move forward.
I have a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Ms. Tremmy to uphold. Is there anyone from the hotel would like to speak on this item? Do we have any discussion? Any objection? That is upheld.
And I would really like to send our prayers out to them over there in Houston. They are really getting hit hard.
Good question, Mr. President. Are y'all gonna continue, you gonna continue to have dialogue with him? Is that what you said?
Oh, yes, absolutely. He can continue through the formal process. That's no problem. But, yeah, we will, we will continue to.
Yeah, I realize their entire situation.
Yes, absolutely.
And it's gonna get worse before it gets better. So I just wondered when if y'all were, you know.
Oh, yes. We, we talked this afternoon, and I told him, "No problem." But he has the, the ability to go forward if we were not able to reach some sort of resolution. But, yes.
Fair enough.
Thank you, Mr. President.
So I believe the last one we have here is the Hampton Inn, Lake Charles. This is the Hampton Inn, I'm sorry, Lake Charles Hotel Ventures LLC. I also have been working with their tax rep as well. They're out of Dallas, so they're a little drier. I did have difficulty getting some information that I needed to review their property. The property valuation has been the same since the last adjustment in 2016. So it's been the same value for 17, 18, and 19. It, it's net, 2020 is the next reassessment, obviously, and that's when we set our new values. However, I explained to them, if they could provide me some information, I'd be more than happy to look at it. The tax rep was having a little bit of a difficult time getting some of that information from the property owners. I don't believe this one is owned locally, but I don't remember, because we have a lot of them. But he did provide me that information late yesterday. I worked on valuations with him today. He was not able to tell me that his client would pull this as of this afternoon. So currently, I'm just going to ask you if you would go ahead and uphold the valuation as is and allow it to move forward, and he and I may be able to resolve it as well.
Boo.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Braim and a second by Mr. Barris to uphold. Is there a representative here for Hampton Inn that would like to speak on this item? Hearing none. Do we have any further discussion? Mr. Landry.
Thank you. I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Well, Ms. Aguilar, if you remember, I don't know, it's been a year or two ago where there was the disagreement with PPG on that brine pit. Whatever became of that? If you remember. I don't wanna put you on the spot. If you don't remember, it's fine.
Off the top of my head.
I just wonder about that often.
Do you, okay. Off the top of my head, I believe that some of that is being converted to storage now and will be adjusted. But at the time, it was about whether or not it was being used as storage or not used as storage. It went further, I mean, you guys upheld, adjusted the value back to the original value. But we worked with them, and based on what happens when those caverns are used as storage, there's also been some information provided from them showing that they were too close together, so they were not going to be able to be used as storage. So those have been reduced in valuation. It's coming back to me. Can you tell? Those have been reduced in valuation, because they're not able to be used as storage. And I think going forward, there are a couple of them that are going to be used as storage. They're preparing that now, and will probably, the values will probably adjust at that point.
The value of the, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Oh, that's okay. That's, I just had to, I kinda had to remember. There's a lot of them.
I don't see that often, so this was an opportunity for me to find out.
Sure, sure. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Do we have any further discussion?
On the hotel?
Mr. Scott, did you?
No, I'm good. Mr. McMillan helped me. No.
Thank you, Ms. Wain.
Okay, so, did we, oh, yes.
Any objections?
Do we have any objections? Hearing none. That is upheld as well. Thank you, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you. And thank you, guys, for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you for all you are.
I believe we're done.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Gonna move to item five. Hold a public hearing at 6:00 P.M. ordering said owners to show cause as to why the said structures and properties should not be condemned. Mr. Robinson.
Good evening, everybody. Our first one on the agenda tonight is at 3529 Merle Drive. This is in the north Sulphur area. We have one manufactured home with an addition. The owner is a Winona Francis Thibodeau Matthews. We recommend this structure be condemned and removed in 30 days.
Move. I saw moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and, by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Latour to condemn and remove. Do we have someone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this property? Do we have any discussion from jurors? Any objection? It is condemned.
We're gonna go to B now, 807 Paul Robertson Road. This is in the Dequincy area. It's a manufactured home. The owner is a Rose Marie Sims Jackson et al. We recommend this structure be condemned and removed in 30 days.
I saw moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Tremmy and a second by Mr. Scott. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this property? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this property? Hearing none. Do we have any discussion from the jurors? Any objection from the jurors? That is condemned.
C is 101 Old River Road, Starks area. This is one house. The owner is Timothy Lawson Mers, and we recommend this structure be condemned and removed in 30 days.
I saw moved.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Tremmy and a second by Mr. Landry. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this property? Anyone in the audience like to speak on this property? Do we have any discussion from the jurors? Any objections? It is condemned.
We're gonna go to D now, 325 Carpenter Lane. This is in the East Lake Charles area. It's one house and one accessory building. The owner of record is a Darrell Charles and Cassandra Lewis. We recommend that both of these structures be condemned and removed in 30 days.
Mr. President, do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this project?
Can you please come up and state your name and address for the record, please?
Darrell Lewis, Lafayette, Louisiana. I'd like to have a few more days to, I started cutting some of the small trees down. I had the house inspected by Mr. Stevens, sent a man down back early in April. Found this houses, get the floors, the walls. The man checked the house for me, and he reported back to Mr. Stevens. One thing the house do need, the lawn need to be manicured. But the house is solid. And it was, I missed the office of Mr. Stevens. He sent a person down there back in about April.
From code enforcement, sir, or you saying, Steven, this is Mr. Robinson right here?
That's right.
No, it wasn't me.
No, you didn't inspect it. He gave me a number. He called. When I cleaned inside the house out, they gave me a number. Man came down there, checked the house over, in and out. And then he also gave me a number to a fella that could give you a price on what the house has worth. They inspected house early this year, back about April. I talked to Mr., I think it was Mr., I talked to a man today. From the letter I received, I called and asked for Mr. Steve, Mr. Robinson.
That's me.
That's you. You remember talking to me today? Okay, you the man. You the ones gave me a number.
Sir, please address the jurors.
No, sir, I did. I did.
Back in April, I was.
No, sir. You probably think about somebody. While you were working.
Sir, can you please address the juror, the jury only?
Okay. Well, anyway, the man came out, checked the house over. And it was from, I wanna say Mr. Robinson, they gave me the number. This person, he came and checked the house.
Mr. Collins would like to speak about it real quick.
Mr. President, it seems like we have a little confusion. Yeah, I'd like to defer the, this action for 30 days.
Second.
So we can work with this young man, Mr. Robinson, and see what we, where we are.
Mr. Crane.
I guess one of the things we need to understand, and I, I think this structure has been vacant for some period of time.
Yes.
And I, I think the gentleman here, they've owned this property, but it's been vacant for some time. I think he, he has called our office, and he requested that he be able to repair it. We don't have a list of what those repairs would be, so it's probably prudent to, to at least defer for 30 days and give him an opportunity to try to get a list of what needs to be repaired. Then we can come back to you, and then you can decide. We, we don't know at this point. It's, it's our opinion that it's cost prohibitive to repair it, and it needs to be condemned. But, you know, we can certainly work with this gentleman and try to see if that's possible, and then come back to you in 30 days. If that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. Mr. Fordham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also suggest that it be secured. It doesn't look like it's secured in any way. It looks wide open to the public. So I would suggest that it be secured immediately. You know, if, if the gentleman wants to spend a million dollars fixing his house up, that's definitely his prerogative. It's probably not in his best interest, but it's his prerogative. So, secure the house, and I'm all in on giving him an extension.
The reason I wanted to defer it for 30 days, because it seemed like we have some confusion with who the man really addressed the problem to.
I have another question, too. I paid taxes this house, but I, when I cut some, I did some scrub work, cleaned the inside out, put outside, to dump the trash in Calcasieu Parish landfill. I cannot dump trash, even with the letter. I, I got the letter stating I own the property, but I have to have someone with a license from Calcasieu Parish to go in the landfill.
We'll definitely work with you on that issue, sir.
You will, sir? Because I talked to the people in the front office about that before. And they told me I couldn't take my letter showing I own the property. I had to ask someone to address, accompany me by a Calcasieu Parish license to get in that landfill.
Mr. Scott.
Yeah, I would like, is, is also part of this needing to cut the grass while he's securing, so, if you can make sure you cut the grass maybe and help out the neighbors while you're securing the doors in the next few days, I think Mr. Collins is giving you a great opportunity to save what you got. So I'm all in, Mr. Collins.
Mr. Guidry.
Thank you. I, I totally agree with Mr. Collins. If, if in the future, is there any way possible we could've gotten some pictures on the inside, so that we could, 'cause I don't know really what's going on, looking at this, Mr. Robinson.
Well, the house appears to be open, but when I went out there last week, it, you can't get in the house. In other words, it's all locked up, and so that's why there's no pictures from the inside.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Landry.
This has nothing to do with this, but, well, it does a little. Back to the landfill issue that he brought up. I'm, my memory, I'm pretty sure that this same thing came up not long ago. And I thought that I suggested that if somebody brings their proof that they own that property and the name matches, I mean, come on, that isn't that hard for us to be able to do something like that. And I thought that was already taken care of. Evidently, it's not. I don't, would that be a Mr. Wainwright question? Come on, man, you guys oughta be able to do that. I mean, I know it's not for everybody, but if I show up there, and I live in Lafayette, and that's what my license says, but my name is Mr. Lewis, and then I got a tax bill that has the address in Calcasieu Parish, and you can see that that's the same person, that's.
We do have.
I sure don't want Mr. Lewis to get aggravated and go throw it on the side of the road somewhere. And not that he would do that, but there could be other people that, that might be what they would do.
And we, we do have a process for making those arrangements. So I'm not sure with what we know here tonight, what, where it fell through the cracks, but we'll be glad to work on. We have, we've encountered this plenty of times and have a way of getting around it.
So you think the employees that are working out there, they're aware of that, and in that situation I described, they would, they would let them go ahead and dump, or?
We do, we, we issue some special identification, a letter, things like that in these cases, so that they can, we do not necessarily allow for the on-the-spot, because it's just, quite frankly, Mr. Landry, a lot of people try to get around you, rules that you have for that, for that, those locations. And we have to be a little more guarded with it than just letting it happen on the spot. So we do have a process where if you're really in that position, you're gonna have a steady stream of solid waste that needs to come from a residence in Calcasieu Parish, that we can accommodate that.
I don't know that I agree with you, but we just talk about this later, 'cause I don't waste everybody's time. You just call me next week, and we're gonna.
Yes, sir.
We gotta work out something. There has to be a way to be able to do that.
I don't necessarily agree with that either, Mr. Landry, because that's how it ends up on the side of the road, if we turn them away.
We can work that out.
So do we have any objection for deferring this for 30 days? Hearing none, this case is deferred for 30 days. Thank you, sir. Mr. Robinson, please make sure to get with him.
All right. We'll move on to the next one. 1305 Laverne Road. This is in the Moss Bluff area. And that's not the correct picture. It's one house and two accessory buildings. The owner is Geneve Ladette.
The owner is Geneve LeDet Gilery et al. That's it right there.
Mr. President, do we have anybody in the audience that needs to speak on this project?
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this property? Name and address for the record, please.
Maurice Tynes, 4839 Isles Road is my office address. I give you the office address because I'm representing Michael Gilery, one of the owners. His sister is the other co-owner, and she's represented here in town by Leslie Knox. The reason it's in the state it's in is because they have, between the two of them, had to finally resolve how the ownership was gonna be finally consolidated and/or handled, which in this case is gonna be managed by having the succession closed that was started of their mom with his sister as executorics. And we've resolved all of those situations. And my client, Mr. Gilery, has kept the yard mowed. It's a nice area, except for the house being, showing its wear and tear and its age. It has two huge vacant areas on north and south of it. It's on Laverne Road, which parallels 171 out there north of Moss Bluff. Mr. Collins, I'm sure is familiar with the neighborhood. That's his, his area. And it backs up in effect to 171. So it's all by itself, and, and it's not in a neighborhood with houses up close to it or something where you would have a security issue. It's wide open in effect. And across the street from it is actually a home that's got some vegetation problems and doesn't appear to have the grass mowed and all that. But it's sitting back. It's got a nice concrete driveway leading up to it. So it's basically in a basketball goal. It's not too bad looking if you don't look close. Now, when you look close, you're gonna see it, it looks up like here. And it's got two portable buildings or small buildings behind it, and they got to go. So what I'm here to do is represent to you on behalf of the co-owners that now that they've got a plan to make it a 100% ownership, namely, my client's buying out his sister. He has spent a lot of money taking care of it over a period of time, even though they couldn't agree. It's commercial, and so his plan is, once we get past tonight, if it is deferred, and I'm hopeful it will be, to put it on the market for sale. We don't have the paperwork yet finished. That's gonna be done within a week or 10 days. And he'll be title owner. I've done the title exam to make sure there are no title defects, so we wouldn't hold up a sale. So his plan is to list it. Now, he don't want to spend a lot of money to give it curb appeal. You know how that's important. Those of you that have sold and bought real estate, you know how that is. We're not trying to do that. But he's certainly gonna make sure it's not gonna endanger anybody, and there are no neighbors where it's gonna fall down on their home or their car, anything like that. So he's gonna get it listed as soon as possible and put it on the market, and it's commercial. And it's gonna be a very valuable piece of property at some point soon. So actually, the two pieces of ground on each side of it is so nice, that vacant and mowed, it'd be nice for that, those three pieces to be consolidated for sale. So there may be a big, nice, commercial development in Moss Bluff if it, if it can be going forward. Basically, what I'm doing, I guess, is saying, when he lists it, whoever buys it, because it's commercial, even though it's a residential building, probably is gonna tear the whole thing down and put a big, nice, nice, commercial building there. So it's a little unusual. It's not in a neighborhood. It's commercial.
President, I move to defer the action on this for 30 days.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Collins to defer for 30 days and a second by Mr. Guidry. We do have some discussion on it. I'd like to say something first. You, you said, "Hopefully, they tear it down." You know, we're here tonight to condemn and have this structure removed. I'm hoping that the new owners, if they do buy it, or if the gentleman, it sits on the market for 60, 90 days, whatever it may sit on the market, that this structure doesn't continue to get worse. And we've deferred it for 30 days, and it, the said property still looks the same way it does right now. I mean, we're here for a reason tonight, and it is for that home to be condemned and taken away. Is there something you're gonna have in your paperwork stating that this property has came up before this jury already wants to be condemned? New owners have to tear it down or fix it back up or something? Hopefully, that's what happens.
That's a very fair question. And yes, as a part of the disclosures to be made when it's listed will be this process here and the fact that it's subject to that very action on the part of the jury. I don't want to make a categorical statement about what's gonna happen to it, but it's not gonna be in position. So it has to be condemned. There's a way to be rid of it. It'll either be torn down completely, or it'll be totally rebuilt, and you'll be tickled pink with it, so.
Glad you said that, sir. Mr. Forham.
Fair question, thank you.
You know, if, if we defer this for only 30 days, we may be back here every 30 days for who knows how long to, to revisit this same subject. So we may want to go a little more than 30 days, whatever Mr. Collins' preference is, to keep from having to revisit every 30 days for who knows how long.
President, we can look at where he's gonna be in the next 30 days, and then if we have to move forward after he moves, do some work on it, then we can see what kind of progress they're making for it.
We don't mind coming back. That's, Mr. Forham has a good, good, good suggestion, but we sure don't mind keeping you posted every 30 days if necessary, so.
Mr. Crane.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I, I was gonna say, I think, and I spoke to Mr. Tynes, and I think, once he gets the paperwork done on the succession, then, and the gentleman gets it 100%, we can sit down with them and discuss, you know, what path we need to go forward. And then in 30 days, if that path is they're gonna list it on the, you know, market, maybe there's a timeframe that you can give them, you know, then, so that, to give them opportunity to sell it and get something done. So I think the 30 days is prudent at this point in time, and then we can discuss that, you know, what, how we move forward after that, if y'all don't mind. And I certainly don't mind letting Mr. Robinson have, or either Mr. Crane have whatever paperwork we're generating as we move. So we'll keep a file going for you.
Mr. Andrew Pont.
Mr. Crane answered my point.
Great. Do we have any further discussion on the item? Any objection on deferring it for 30 days? Hearing none, item is deferred for 30 days.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
All right, item number F, the 2081 Claude A. Bear Road. This structure has been removed in the last couple of days, so there'll be no action on this one. We're gonna move to, to G. This is 163 Packing House Road, I Way.
Move to.
It's one manufactured home. The owner is a Rachel Lynn Touche. We recommend this structure be condemned and removed in 30 days.
Moved upholds on this item?
Second.
Move to tear it down. We have a motion to condemn and remove by Mr. Latour and a second by Mr. McMillan. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? Hearing none, do we have any objection from the jurors? It is condemned. Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
How did plan an enjoni vote on that?
How is it like here? Hey, I'll call this, I'm like. Give me that vote. I'm just listening to How. It's in my ear, like.
All right. All right, we got, we have one more. This gonna be, it's gonna be H, 1955 White Oak Street. This is in Eventon area. It's one manufactured home. The owner is Justin K. Dowlers. And we recommend this structure be condemned and removed in 30 days.
No move.
Polls owning the planning?
That's second.
Oh, okay. You should have just shown that picture first.
That would have made it easy.
Yeah.
I have a motion by Mr. Abshire and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont to condemn and remove in 30 days. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? Anyone in the audience like to speak on the item?
That's salable.
Do we have any objection from the jurors? Hearing none, it is condemned.
Thank you.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Do adjourn, no move.
Second. Before we adjourn, I would like to have a point of personal privilege, if you don't, don't mind. Have you, as everyone in here knows, there's been a, several different circumstances that has changed since I've been a police juror, and it's been a pleasure serving with each one of y'all, each of y'all here. It, it really has been, and, and serving the people of my district. And, and of all of Calcasieu Parish, to be honest with you. But I've recently married the love of my now life and the rest of my life. She's here in the audience, Missy. And I will be moving with her. And at that point, I will no longer, at that point, no longer be a resident of Moss Bluff. So therefore, I will be resigning and as a juror here. So, and it, it breaks my heart, but I got a great life ahead of me with her. So thank y'all for allowing me to serve with you here on, at this jury. And that's it. We are adjourned.